...of the United States of America.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. Board of Commissioners' Public Meeting, Tuesday, January 20th, 2015. The time is now 8:45. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Law, Chapter 231, notice of this meeting was published in the December 11th, 2014, issues of the Nutley Sun, the Star Ledger, and the Herald News. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Hall Bulletin Board, and a copy is on file in the municipal clerk's office. Commissioner Rogers is absent excuse this evening. Commissioner Tucci?
Here.
Commissioner Evans?
Here.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Here.
Mayor Petracco?
Here. Okay, I see we have minutes tonight?
Yes, Mayor. We have minutes for December 16th, 2014, and for December 31st, 2014. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers is absent excuse this evening. Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye.
Excuse me, just for the record, on the, in the minutes, they identified the mover of the last, the minutes from the last meeting as unidentified speaker. That unidentified speaker is me. So we've just identified that speaker.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, I see we have communications and correspondence.
Yes, Mayor. We have an event application submitted by the Nutley Irish Association for their 37th Annual St. Patrick's Day Parade. The event is scheduled for Saturday, March 7th, 2015. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye.
We also have an application to hold a Sunday raffle for the Nutley Junior Raider Booster Club for February 8th, 2015. Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye. And we might as well move before we do the proclamations. Let's do, um, the reports. Commissioner Tucci?
I have a shade tree report for the month of December, 2014.
You, Commissioner Scarpelli?
I have various reports, Mayor.
Thank you. Um, let's move on to the bill list.
Yes, Mayor. Public Affairs, $203,497.57. Revenue and Finance, $2,399,666.79. Public Safety, $134,940.29. Public Works, $294,851.61. Total Payroll is $749,573.52, for a grand total of $3,867,329.84.
We need a motion?
Yep. Move, move it.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye. Okay, thank you. Now, we will move on to the proclamations that we have here. The first proclamation, proclamation that I'm going to read is honoring Mr. Ralph Pastore, who I say is here tonight. Thank you for coming. Mr. Pastore served on our zoning board for many years. Whereas Ralph Pastore, who resides on Columbia Avenue in the, in a home that he built in 1961, and whereas Ralph and his wife Ruth Ann have three children, Bob, Rick, and Michelle. And whereas Ralph worked for 40 years at Damon G. Douglas as Vice President of the Construction, and then moved to railroad construction in charge of the construction and sales. And whereas Ralph retired in 2008, but could continue to help the company expand to include a building division. And whereas Ralph has always been active in various organizations, including President of the Building Contractors in New Jersey, as co-chairman in the Carpenter's Funds, and as a member of the Drug Awareness Initiative for the Construction Industry. Whereas in 1999, then-Mayor Pete Scarpelli, recognizing Ralph's keen knowledge in the field of construction and building, appointed him as a member to the Nutley Zoning Board. And whereas Ralph's experience and expertise was regarded and appreciated in many decisions and options made during the tenure on the Board. And now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that Ralph Pastore be recognized with appreciation for his dedication and commitment and the invaluable member of the Nutley Zoning Board. We don't need a vote for, um, proclamation, but I'd just like to give Mr. Pastore a round of applause for all his years of service.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to, I would like, I would like you to, excuse me. Mr. Mayor, I would like to thank you for, you and the Board of Commissioners for this, for this honor. It has been a pleasure, and it has been a pleasure and an honor to serve on the Board of Adjustment. I would also like to thank Paul Squaredato, Diane McGovern, and the rest of the Board for their dedication and for their friendship. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pastore. Do you have the picture, Sam? Yeah, Mr. Pastore. Okay. Very good.
Congratulations.
Very nice. Okay, now we have another special guest for another proclamation, and I'll read this one. Where, whereas William Wubin was born on July 12th, 2005, to Michael and Leslie Wubin, and whereas during the first year of life, Willem was diagnosed with a rare condition called Mobius Syndrome. And whereas Mobius Syndrome is characterized by facial paralysis and other neurological issues, including visual impairments, sensory integration dysfunction, sleep disorders, and weak muscle tones. And whereas William took his first steps at 27 months of age, persevered through years of physical occupational and speech therapies, and whereas William, after three years of special education, was mainstreamed into the third grade class at Lincoln School. And this year continues to thrive as an A student in the fourth grade. And whereas even at this, his young age, William has demonstrated the need to share his experience and to remind everyone that we are all the same inside. And now, therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners, the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that in honor of our young friend, William Wubin, January 24th is proclaimed as Mobius Syndrome Awareness Day, to show the world that through determination, hard work, and perseverance, anything and everything is achievable. Again, we don't need a vote for this. I understand William would like to speak?
So, let me just say that for Mobius Syndrome Awareness Day, we'll be handing out pencils to Willem's class and his brother and sister's class. And Willem wrote a poem today to speak about that.
Use this pencil to write your shadow line on the list of them tonight. I cannot smile, but if you and my friends for a while, you'll see I smile with my heart.
Wait, are you going to speak? Okay.
Here for William.
You know, I just want to give everyone an understanding of Mobius Syndrome and how special Willem is. And so, Mobius Syndrome, extremely rare condition. And in fact, when Willem was born, most of the people that we've had experiences with had never heard of it. And a lot of people didn't really know sort of how to treat it, how to deal with it. But Willem persevered, and I say I'm more proud of Willem than anything, because his greatest attribute is his compassion. That Willem, no matter what he's feeling, he's always thinking about others. And he's always thinking about, you know, he's always has concern for his brother, and his sister, and his mother, and me. And he's always willing to give back. And that's why I wanted him to be recognized by this town, because I think he's something for us to be proud of. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. And I, we, just, this is a comment, and the Commissioners wanted to join in. I just want your family, and the brother and sister, and the mom sitting over there, if there's anything that the Board of Commissioners could ever do, I know these gentlemen to my left and my right well, alls you have to do is ask, and we'll be willing to help you guys in any which way you can. And I have to say, this seeing the accomplishments that he's made over the years is really fantastic. To be an A student at Lincoln School's not the easiest for any child to, to do. And through, through hard work, it's, I'm sure he has a great foundation at home. So, congratulations to all of you. Commissioners Scarpelli?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to say congratulations, and I'm also a former Lincoln School student, so very proud of you, and very proud that you're from Lincoln School.
Sure. Mom, Dad, thank you for being here tonight. I think it takes courage to do this. And Willem, you're my new hero.
Well, Willem, I didn't go to Lincoln School, but I'm proud of you nonetheless. All right? To be an A student anywhere, especially at Lincoln, is a great achievement. And I want to thank you and your parents for making us aware of this, so that when people do come and speak to us about this, now we can begin to understand just what's involved, and how we can go about helping folks that have the syndrome. So, thank you very much for being here this evening.
Let's take our photo. Let's take our photo. Willem, there's only one other thing, too. Your dad gave me this poem. Someday, when you get married, you could stop by my house, and I will have this. I promise you that. That's very nice. Okay. Okay, I guess we will move on to ordinance introductions. Commissioner Scarpelli, you'll read. Commissioner Rogers?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. This is ordinance number 3303 for Commissioner Rogers. An ordinance to amend an ordinance to fix the salaries of certain officers and employees of Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, effective January 1st, 2015. Be it ordained by the Board of Commissioners of the following, of Township of Nutley and the County of Essex the following, to amend the title of Registered Environmental Health Specialist, Public Health, Part-Time. I move this ordinance to be passed to a second reading, advertising Nutley Sun together with the notes required by law. That further consideration of said ordinance for final passage by the Board of Commissioners to be held at second reading on January 20th, 2015. That's Campy. When's the public hearing?
February 3rd.
February 3rd? February 3rd, 2015.
Need a motion?
Second.
Two seconds.
Commissioner Evans?
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye. Thank you, Commissioner. I have a ordinance, public hearing tonight, I believe. This ordinance is for the Rent Leveling Board. It's ordinance number 3302, an ordinance to amend Chapter 532 of the Code of the Township of Nutley entitled Rent Control, Section 532-14, when in fact, one effective termination of provisions. Is, I, I need a motion to open up the public hearing?
Move it. Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye. Thank you, Commissioner. I have a ordinance, public hearing tonight, I believe. This ordinance is for the Rent Leveling Board. It's ordinance number 3302, an ordinance to amend Chapter 532 of the Code of the Township of Nutley entitled Rent Control, Section 532-14, when in fact, one effective termination of provisions. Is, I, I need a motion to open up the public hearing?
Move it. Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to comment on ordinance number 3302? Seeing no one, I need a motion to close the public portion.
Move it. Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye. And we need to move the ordinance.
Move it. Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye. Thank you. Commissioner Tucci, what are your resolutions?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Whereas the Township of Nutley has a need to acquire specialized professional services as a fair and open contract pursuant to the provision of NJSA 19:44A-20.5. And whereas Department of Parks and Public Property has a need to acquire specialized professional services for a qualified academy for training youth soccer programs. And whereas Municipal Clerk is hereby authorized and directed to advertise for a request for qualifications for a qualified academy for training youth soccer programs. Now therefore be it resolved that the request for qualifications, or RFQ, shall be due on Wednesday, February 11th, 2015, at 3:00 PM, addressed to Municipal Clerk, Nutley Township Hall, 1 Kennedy Drive, Nutley, New Jersey. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Now, we will move on to the proclamations that we have here. The first proclamation, proclamation that I'm going to read is honoring Mr. Ralph Pastore, who I say is here tonight. Thank you for coming. Mr. Pastore serves on our zoning board for many years. Whereas Ralph Pastore, who resides on Columbia Avenue in the, in a home that he built in 1961, and whereas Ralph and his wife Ruth Ann have three children, Bob, Rick, and Michelle. And whereas Ralph worked for 40 years at Damon G. Douglas as Vice President of the Construction, and then moved to railroad construction in charge of the construction and sales. And whereas Ralph retired in 2008, but could continue to help the company expand to include a building division. And whereas Ralph has always been active in various organizations, including President of the Building Contractors in New Jersey, as co-chairman in the Carpenter's Funds, and as a member of the Drug Awareness Initiative for the Construction Industry. Whereas in 1999, then-Mayor Pete Scarpelli, recognizing Ralph's keen knowledge in the field of construction and building, appointed him as a member to the Nutley Zoning Board. And whereas Ralph's experience and expertise was regarded and appreciated in many decisions and options made during the tenure on the Board. And now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that Ralph Pastore be recognized with appreciation for his dedication and commitment and the invaluable member of the Nutley Zoning Board. We don't need a vote for the, um, proclamation, but I'd just like to give Mr. Pastore a round of applause for all his years of service.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to, I would like, I would like you to, excuse me. Mr. Mayor, I would like to thank you for, you and the Board of Commissioners for this, for this honor. It has been a pleasure, and it has been a pleasure and an honor to serve on the Board of Adjustment. I would also like to thank Paul Squaredato, Diane McGovern, and the rest of the Board for their dedication and for their friendship. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pastore. Do you have the picture, Sam?
Yeah, Mr. Pastore.
I don't know if I eyed, but I do eye.
Okay. Whereas the Township of Nutley has a need to acquire the services of a registered municipal accountant to conduct the annual audit of the township books, accounts, and financial transactions within five months after the close of its fiscal year, as a non-fair and open contract pursuant to the provisions of NJSA 19:44A-20.4 or 20.5 as appropriate. And whereas the Chief Financial Officer has determined and certified in writing that the value of the aggregate services provided by the vendor for the one year will exceed $17,500. And whereas the anticipated term of the contract is 12 months from January 1, 2015, through December 31st, 2015. And whereas Nizavachi &amp; Company, LLP, Certified Public Accountants and Consultants, 200 Valley Road, Suite 300, Mount Arlington, New Jersey, has submitted a fee schedule for providing such services, the total of which is not to exceed $149,230. And whereas Nizavachi &amp; Company, Certified Public Accountants and Consultants, has completed and submitted a business entity disclosure certification, which certifies that they have not made any reportable contributions to a political or candidate committee in the Township of Nutley in the previous one year, and that the contract will prohibit them from making any reportable contributions through the term of the contract. And whereas funds are available in account 501-22205 in the amount of $87,326, and account 505-706-205 in the amount of $61,904, and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification being attached to this resolution. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, that the Township of Nutley authorizes the mayor to enter into a contract with Nizavachi &amp; Company, LLP, Certified Public Accountants and Consultants, and be it further resolved that the business entity disclosure certification and the determination of value be placed on file with this resolution. So move.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye.
Whereas the Department of Parks and Public Property has a need to acquire specialized professional services for accident and safety review and consulting. And whereas the Municipal Clerk is hereby authorized and directed to advertise for a request for qualifications for accident and safety review and consulting. Now therefore be it resolved that sealed requests for qualifications will be opened and read on Wednesday, February 11th, 2015, at 3:00 PM, in the third floor, Commission Chambers, Township Hall, 1 Kennedy Drive, Nutley, New Jersey. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye.
Whereas the Department of Parks and Public Property has a need to acquire specialized professional services for a consultant and risk manager. And whereas the Municipal Clerk is hereby authorized and directed to advertise for an RFQ for consultant and risk manager. Now therefore be it resolved that the RFQ shall be due on Wednesday, February 11th, 2015, at 3:00 PM, addressed to Municipal Clerk, Nutley Township Hall, 1 Kennedy Drive, Nutley, New Jersey. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye.
That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you. Commissioner Evans?
Yes, thank you. I have several. I'll try to move through them as efficiently as possible. Whereas the Township of Nutley pursuant to NJSA 48:11-11 made by resolution and without advertising for bids, purchase any goods or services under an approved county cooperative purchasing program. And whereas the Township of Nutley has a need on a timely basis to purchase goods or services utilizing the following cooperative purchasing programs: Essex County, Somerset County, Morris County, Union County, and Cranford, and Middlesex County. Whereas the town of Nutley intends to enter into contracts with the attached referenced contract vendors through the, this resolution and properly executed contracts. Shall be subject to all of the conditions applicable to the current contracts. Now therefore be it resolved that the Township of Nutley authorizes the purchasing agent to purchase certain goods and services from those approved co-op vendors pursuant to all conditions of the individual county contracts. And be it further resolved that the county, the governing body of the Township of Nutley pursuant to NJAC 5:30-5.5B, the certification of available funds shall either certify the full maximum amount against the budget at the time of the contract is awarded, or no contract shall be chargeable or certified until such time as the goods or services are ordered or otherwise called for prior to placing the order and certification of the availability of funds is made by the Chief Financial Officer. And be it further resolved that the duration of the contract between the Township of Nutley and the referenced cooperative purchasing vendors shall be January 1, 2014, to December 31st, 2014. Be it further resolved that the equipment, uh, I think the last provision of this is in error and should be removed. I don't think we need another further resolved, so, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Rogers? Sorry, absent excuse. Mayor Petracco?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Did I, I? I don't know if I eyed, but I do eye.
I eyed.
Okay. Whereas the Township of Nutley has a need to acquire the services of a registered municipal accountant to conduct the annual audit of the township books, accounts, and financial transactions within five months after the close of its fiscal year, as a non-fair and open contract pursuant to the provisions of NJSA 19:44A-20.4 or 20.5 as appropriate. And whereas the Chief Financial Officer has determined and certified in writing that the value of the aggregate services provided by the vendor for the one year will exceed $17,500. And whereas the anticipated term of the contract is 12 months from January 1, 2015, through December 31st, 2015. And whereas Nizavachi &amp; Company, LLP, Certified Public Accounts and Consultants, 200 Valley Road, Suite 300, Mount Arlington, New Jersey, has submitted a fee schedule for providing such services, the total of which is not to exceed $149,230. And whereas Nizavachi &amp; Company, Certified Public Accounts and Consultants, has completed and submitted a business entity disclosure certification, which certifies that they have not made any reportable contributions to a political or candidate committee in the Township of Nutley in the previous one year, and that the contract will prohibit them from making any reportable contributions through the term of the contract. And whereas funds are available in account 501-22205 in the amount of $87,326, and account 505-706-205 in the amount of $61,904, and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification being attached to this resolution. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners that the Township of, that the Township of Nutley authorizes the mayor to enter into a contract with Nizavachi &amp; Company, LLP, Certified Public Accountants and Consultants, and be it further resolved that the business entity disclosure certification and the determination of value be placed on file with this resolution. So move.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye.
Whereas the Township of Nutley has a need to acquire the services of an attorney as municipal tax counsel to provide legal counsel services concerning municipal tax appeals. And the Township of Nutley has a non-fair and open contract pursuant to the provisions of NJSA 40:19:44A-20.4 or 20.5 as appropriate. And whereas the tax assessor has determined and certified in writing that the value of the aggregate services provided by the vendor for the year will exceed $17,500. Now, whereas the law firm of Pyros Inis Sefeli Paris and Genetempo, 360 Pasake Avenue, Nutley, New Jersey, has submitted a fee schedule for providing such services, the total of which is not to exceed $40,000. And whereas the anticipated term of this contract is for 12 months, from January 1, 2015, through December 31st, 2015. Whereas the law firm of Pyros Inis Sefeli Paris and Genetempo has completed and submitted the business entity disclosure certification, which certifies that they have not made any reportable contributions to a political or candidate committee in the Township of Nutley in the previous one year, and that the contract will prohibit them from making any reportable contributions through the term of the contract. And whereas funds are available in account 501-204-200, and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification being attached to this resolution. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley that we authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with the law firm of Pyros Inis Sefeli Paris and Genetempo, and be it further resolved that the business entity disclosure certification and determination of value be placed on file with this resolution. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye.
Whereas the Township of Nutley and the law firm of Pyros Inis Sefeli Paris and Genetempo, 360 Pasake Avenue, Nutley, has entered into a contract to provide legal counsel services concerning municipal tax appeals. Whereas the Director of the Department of Revenue and Finance has recommended the following change order from said contract. This relates to 2014. Change order number two, legal counsel services in the amount of $4,000. Whereas funds are available in account 501-204-200, and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, and said certification is attached to this resolution. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that we are hereby authorized to enter into a signed change order with the Pyros Inis Sefeli Paris and Genetempo for the Township of Nutley.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the Treasury be in chief hereby authorized to refund overpayments of tax charges for Block 8304 Lot 10 for $2,189.94, Block 4001, Lot 7, $2,921.09, Block 5106 Lot 4, $72.86, for a total of $5,183.89. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye.
Whereas RS 48:5-17 allows the cancellation of property tax credits or delinquent amounts in the amount that is less than $10. Whereas the governing body may authorize the tax collector to process without further action on their part any cancellation of property tax credits or delinquencies of less than $10,000, excuse me, less than $10. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, New Jersey, hereby authorizes the tax collector to cancel said amounts as deemed necessary. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the Treasury be in chief hereby authorized to refund overpayments of water charges in the amount of $80.96 for Block 5003, Lot 11. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye.
Whereas the Township of Nutley pursuant to NJSA 48:11-12A and NJAC 5:34-7.29C made by resolution and without advertising for bids, purchase any goods and services under the State of New Jersey cooperative purchasing program for any state contracts entered into on behalf of the state by the Division of Purchase and Property in the Department of the Treasury. There, whereas the Township of Nutley has a need on a timely basis to purchase goods and services utilizing state contracts. Whereas the Township of Nutley intends to enter into contracts with Candora's Technologies, as authorized under the Dell, New Jersey, WSCA Contract B27160, State Contract 72- intends to enter to contracts with Candor's Technologies as authorized under the Dell, New Jersey WSCA Contract B27160, State Contract 7256, and also Samuel's Inc. Buy Wise Auto 73-719s, 85992 contracts. Through this resolution and properly executed contracts shall be subject to all conditions applicable to the current state contracts. Now therefore be it resolved that the Township of Nutley authorizes the purchasing agent to purchase goods and services from this approved New Jersey contract, state contract vendor pursuant to all the conditions of the state contract. Be it further resolved that the governing body in the Township of Nutley pursuant to NJAC 5:30-5.5B, the certification of available funds shall either certify the full maximum amount against the budget at the time the contract is awarded, or no contract shall be chargeable or certified until such time as the goods or services are ordered or otherwise called for prior to placing the order and certification of availability of funds is made by the Chief Financial Officer, and be it further resolved that the duration of the contract between the Township of Nutley and the Candor's Technologies and Samuel Buy Wise Auto shall be from January 1, 2015 to December 31, 2015, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye.
Whereas the tax collector for this municipality has previously issued tax sales certificates to U.S. Bank Custodian for TLCF 2012A LLC for the following block and lot, block 4201, lot 10, certificate number 201442 in the amount of $471.55. Whereas the purchaser of the effort said sales certificate has indicated that the tax collector that they have lost or otherwise misplaced the original tax sales certificates and have duly filed for the appropriate affidavit of lost with the tax collector. Now therefore be resolved by the tax collector, be resolved that the tax collector of the municipality be and is hereby authorized upon receipt of the appropriately executed and notarized loss affidavit and the payment of a fee of $100 per certificate to issue appropriate duplicate tax sales certificate to the said purchaser covering the certificate lost as previously described in accordance with the requirements of Chapter 99 of Public Laws of 1997. Be it further resolved a copy of this resolution and a loss affidavit be attached to the duplicate certificate to be issued to said purchaser, and that said duplicate certificate shall be stamped or otherwise have imprinted upon it the word duplicate as required by law. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye.
Be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex State, New Jersey, that there is hereby established in the Department of Revenue and Finance a petty cash account in the amount of $650, said funds to be in the custody of the cashier. All petty cash vouchers are to be approved by the department designee and authorized by the purchasing agent or her designee, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye.
Be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex State, New Jersey, that the Treasury be in chief hereby authorized to refund overpayment of property taxes for block 9000, lot 46, $4,474.59 for 2013 fourth quarter, block 9046 for $4,737.48 for 2014 fourth quarter, block 4500, lot 3, $592.59, 2014 fourth quarter, block 8300, lot 4, $1,283.67, 2014 fourth quarter, for a total amount of $11,088.33 for said years due to successful tax court judgment, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye.
Whereas RS 54:67 permits governing bodies of each municipality to fix the rate of interest to be charged for a non-payment of taxes or assessment subject to any abatement or discount for the late payment of the taxes provided by law, and whereas RS 54:67, excuse me, 4:67, has been amended to permit the fixing of said interest rate of 8% per annum on the first $1,500 of the delinquency and 18% per annum on any amount in excess of $1,500. These are the minimums that are allowed by state statute. This is not driven by the municipality but by state law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, New Jersey, resolve as follows. One, the tax collector is hereby authorized and directed to charge 8% per annum on taxes becoming delinquent after the due date, subject to any abatement or discount for the late payment of taxes provided by law. Effective January 1, 2015, quarterly tax payments made by cash check or money order shall have a 10-day grace period. Any payments not made in accordance with Section 2 of this resolution shall be charged interest from the due date as says forth in Section 1 of this resolution, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye.
Be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, New Jersey, that in accordance with the provisions of RS 48:4-59, the following transfers of the 2,000 appropriation reserves being the same are hereby authorized and approved from tax collector salary and wage $4,000 to tax assessor ONE $4,000, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye.
I have two remaining resolutions. Both of these resolutions are established our temporary budget since we're in the budget development phase. These resolutions will authorize the government to operate until the new budget is adopted according to the state timetable. Whereas New Jersey Statute 48:419 provides that whereas debt service is to be paid in 2015 prior to the time of the final adoption of the 2015 budget, temporary appropriation shall be made for the amount of such debt service in the manner and time therein provided. Whereas the date of this resolution is subsequent to December 20, 2014, and whereas debt service will become due during the first six months of 2015. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley that the following temporary appropriations be made. Current fund interest in bonds $74,000, current fund NJEIT trust interest $7,000 for a total debt service in the current fund of $81,000. Water operating budget NJEIT interest $9,200, and NJEIT fund principal $26,000 for a total debt service in the water utility of $35,200, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye.
Whereas 48:4-19, local budget law provides that where any contracts, commitments, or payments are to be made prior to the final adoption of the 2015 budget, temporary appropriation be made for the purposes and the amounts required in a manner and time provided therein. And whereas the date of this resolution is within the first 30 days of 2015, and whereas the total appropriations in the 2015 budget less appropriation made for capital improvement fund, debt service, and public assistance are as follows. Current fund $45,484,784.15, water utility $4,220,90. Whereas 26 and 1/4% of the total appropriation in 2015 budget less appropriations for capital improvement fund, debt service, and public assistance in the said 2015 budgets is as follows. Current fund $11,939,755.84, water utility $1,107,773.63. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex, the following temporary appropriations are made, and that the certified copy of this resolution is submitted to the Chief Financial Officer for her record. Attached is a by-line item summary of the individual budgets by the individual accounts for each department within the municipality, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye.
Finally, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Move resolutions, Mayor.
Thank you. Whereas Constable Chris Mazini, 51 Pesake Avenue, Nutley, New Jersey, has applied for renewal and constable license number 15, and whereas the application has been reviewed by the municipal clerk, police department. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County of Essex State, New Jersey, that Constable Chris Mazini be reappointed as Constable number 15 for a one-year term effective January 20, 2015. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye. Whereas raffle applications have been received from the following organizations, and PTO Nutley Lincoln School, license number 01-15 on premise 5050 cash raffle Friday, February 6, 2015. PTO Nutley Lincoln School, license number 02-15 on premise merchandise raffle Friday, February 6, 2015. Nutley Junior Raider Booster Club for Nutley High School Softball Team, license number 03-15 on premise 5050 cash raffle Sunday, February 8, 2015. Nutley Junior Raider Booster Club for Nutley High School Softball Team, license number 04-15 on premise Tricky Tray, Sunday, February 2, 2015. Whereas the applications have been reviewed and approved by the municipal clerk and the police department. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County of Essex State, New Jersey, that the aforementioned licenses are approved and the municipal clerk is authorized to issue the licenses. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye. Thank you. That concludes our business portion of the meeting. We'll now open it up to our public portion for public comment. Madam Clerk, will you please read our five-minute rule?
Yes, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to five minutes. All remarks to the Board and individual members must be addressed to the Mayor. The Mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board. Dialogue between citizens and others addressing the Board shall be allowed unless the Mayor or presiding officer or the majority of the membership of the Board shall determine that the interests of decorum and/or the expeditious conduct of municipal business are being adversely affected by such dialogue.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to address the Board of Commissioners?
Terry Quirk. Can you hear me? I don't know if you can hear me. Terry Quirk, 45 Hampton Place. I'm actually not speaking on behalf of my organization tonight. I will be done in five minutes, but I just wanted to let you know that I had no intention to come here, okay? Usually, like I said, I usually hang out over at the Board of Ed meetings, but Saturday night something happened that changed my mind, and I just wanted to share this experience with you. I was coming home, and because I hate waiting at lights, I was coming down Kingsland Avenue, and I decided to make a right onto Hillside and to come around this way, which is right down by Erie Place, which is next to the trestle. And I was approaching Franklin Avenue right down here, and I looked to my side, and there was an elderly woman in the crosswalk. She hadn't gone out into the crosswalk. She was on the side street. And someone was coming down Franklin Avenue. I stopped, they stopped, and a person coming from underneath the trestle heading north stopped. He was in a big black pickup, and this was a sedan from what I'm seeing from my vantage point. And everybody stopped, so she steps into the crosswalk, and she proceeds to walk across the street. And as she's approaching the big black truck, and she's passing him, two cars come out of nowhere behind the big black truck and speed around her so quickly. I can't even begin to tell you how terrified I was. I thought she was gonna die. I thought this was gonna be, oh my God, I'm gonna watch this woman get hit by a car. Somehow, they sped around her. I couldn't even, I couldn't even get their license plate number, because believe me, if I got their license plate number, my next stop would be at the police station because I would be reporting them, okay? Because this was, I don't know whether there was a fire that they had to get to, but it was unbelievable how quickly they moved around her, and they could have clipped her if it wasn't for the fact that she just slowed down. It was by the grace of God that she didn't die. Okay, so I know that a few years ago, I came to this board, and I did talk about solar panels, and I did talk about those flashing lights that are over in Lynnhurst, and I talked about those things, and I gave you information. I just think in light of what's happened, it's really dangerous out there. I mean, you're driving down, especially if it's a, if it's a, at night, you could barely see the stop signs, and it's just a scary place out there. So I'm not saying that we have to be like Lynnhurst, okay?
Let me just interrupt you for one second. I do remember you telling me that a couple years ago, and finally, with cooperation with Commissioner Scarpelli too, we did at the end of the year purchase some lights and things that are gonna make our, some of our crosswalks in town illuminate.
Okay.
And, you know, more signage and all that stuff. So, you know, after unfortunately what happened on Center Street, you know, we've been working on this, and again, you know, I'm hoping when the weather breaks, we'll be able to do some things together with EPW to correct that problem, but we already have ordered the signs.
Excellent.
For public safety. Although, I have to just say this one statement to you and to people here tonight and the audience. I have been preaching because I do cross the streets in town too, and I drive around town. We live here, all that stuff. Unfortunately, it just seems that my message hasn't been getting out loud enough to teach people manners, because that's what it's about. And like I've said, when the woman, you know, unfortunately got hit by the car, and there were some people here from our senior home. I tell my own wife and my own kids, you know, everybody seems to do the speed limit on the highways, and with these newer cars, the sports cars, the BMWs, the high-performance car, everybody does, you know, 35 around town. And like I instruct my own family, is that God forbid, if you hit someone, a child, or a person, or an adult, or a senior citizen, even though you may get a fine for it, you may, you know, whatever the repercussions of that, you have to live with that the rest of your life. So I beg everybody to please slow down, you know. Nutley is a growing community, as we all know, and, you know, there's more pedestrians and speeds that people go, and this town is ridiculous. And unfortunately, we can't have a cop on every corner, on every side street, at every crosswalk. And the Nutley Police Department and myself, we do, you know, we try our best to, you know, to acquire that speed that people slow down. And in my office, it's the biggest complaint I get from people, either there's not enough enforcement, or their son or daughter or cousin or brother is the one receiving a ticket. So, you know, in the future, I have instructed the Chief of Police that we are gonna enforce these speed limits in town. Not that we're going to, we are doing it. You know, we're putting more radar in these cars. We ordered it. The equipment is expensive, but again, we can't, you know, we have to police ourselves to a certain degree. And it's really appalling to sit up here and hear your story of after a woman got hit by a car, that, you know, people in our town are not obeying the rules in policing themselves. So we'll keep emphasizing this message through public safety and the Board of Commissioners. Like I said, you know, Joe and I are working together to illuminate some of these crosswalks and do what we can with some of these solar panel signs that you brought to my attention a couple of years ago. So I have to tell you, I sit up here and listen to your comment, and I'm embarrassed by it because of, you know, not for me to be redundant, but it's such a problem. And, you know, when the woman came here from the senior home, I drive up to Morris Town a lot. People slam on their brakes when there's a person on the sidewalk, not even in the crosswalk. And I just don't know why we can't get that message across to our residents or people passing through our town. We, you know, it was unfortunate because the week that that woman did get hit by that car, or van it was, we had, with the county, we had an effort to write, you know, to enforce crosswalks. That was the week before, and we issued almost 60 tickets in a day. Unfortunately, the next day, when the cops aren't there, people get back to their old habits. And it really is a shame, and, you know, I urge people, it could be your son, daughter, brother, sister, mother, father, grandparents, that's gonna step out in that sidewalk and God forbid have a problem. So your message is loud and clear, and, you know, I appreciate you coming to exploit that message even more.
I just want to say, like, I don't think we should be afraid of, like, being vigilant. I mean, I grew up in Lynnhurst, and I remember driving into, to this day, driving into Rutherford. Rutherford is very vigilant, and they will come out of nowhere and hand you over a ticket. So when you're driving into Rutherford, your mind is, oh God, I gotta go right down to 25 miles an hour because I'm gonna get a ticket. This guy's gonna be right there. So you know what? If you have to be more vigilant, do it. And if people are not happy, then just say, slow down, and they won't have to. But I do thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else this evening that would like to address the Board of Commissioners?
Is there anyone else this evening that would like to address the Board of Commissioners?
Michael OJ, 133 High Street. I heard, I don't have the full details, but from what I understand, there are gonna be two medical schools opening up in the Hofflin Roche property, and my question is this, when will that open? And kinda like what the Paramus malls do for Paramus, those malls absorb a lot of the property taxes, a lot of property tax burdens for the homeowners of Paramus. Will these new medical schools that are gonna be opening up in Hofflin Roche, are they gonna absorb a lot of our property tax burdens? And if they are, and if they are, when are these scheduled to open?
Well, they're scheduled, according to this press release, in 2017 to have their first class there, but I'll let Commissioner Evans answer your tax question.
It's actually one medical school that is integrated with doctors, nurses, and medical technicians, as part of one single building on the premise. The fact that it's a lease, not a purchase, it is a taxable transaction, and it'll be taxed according to its revenue stream, which is still an unknown, since they announced through a letter of intent. Their intention to do this, all these terms haven't been finalized yet.
Okay, so it's gonna be probably taxed?
According to the revenue it generates, not according to how much we think it should pay, but according to the revenue it generates by state law.
All right, according to the revenue. Okay, that's what I wanted to know. All right, thank you. By 2017, thank you very much.
Is there anyone else this evening that would like to address the Board of Commissioners?
Kenny Landry, 135 Lakeside Drive. Oprah was submitted for a report for the Planning Board on October 15th, 2014 meeting. The very, very brief minutes say that a report was given by George Kemmerel from Urban Studio. I Oprah'd the report, and the Oprah came back, there was no written report from Mr. Kemmerel to the Board. And what I would like to know is, when we hire consultants to give reports, how is it that we can find out what the content of the reports might be? I mean, our taxpaying dollars paid for a consultant to consult with the Planning Board. The minute, say, a report was given by the consultant.
Maybe our counsel could answer that question.
Yes, Ms. Landry, you know that as soon as the report is, if there's a written report and it's complete and final, you will, the public document, and you'll get to see it. As far as I know, when I spoke to Mr. Kemmerel, there was no written report, it was just verbal. Doesn't mean there's not going to be one, I believe there will be one. Obviously, have your Oprah request, there's a document, we'll produce it.
Okay, 'cause that is not what the Oprah request, reply said, it says there was no written report to the Board.
At this time.
That isn't what it said.
I don't care what it says, I'm telling you.
Oh, okay, all right. I just wanna say, I'm just trying to find out when the report from this consulting company will be available to the public.
Report is generated, then...
Okay, thank you. Do I sit down and get back up for my next one? Okay, thank you. In December 2014, the total overtime for water ops was $28,422.51. My question is, for that amount of overtime, which is approximately that amount every month in 2014, would it be more fiscally responsible to hire additional staff for water ops instead of paying almost $30,000 in overtime? That's question one. And question two, there seems to be some conversation going on about overtime is to go and take water out of people's flooded basements, or stopped-up toilets, or something like that. So my question is, do we charge a plumbing service fee to houses when we show up to do things that I know I've paid a plumber to do and was not aware that the town worked overtime providing that service?
Why don't we let Commissioner Scarpelli answer that?
Well, first of all, Ms. Landry, we budget about $250,000 a year in overtime, and you have to realize that water and sewer operations are a 24/7 operation, that anytime there is a backup or a water main break, that's an emergency situation, health emergency, I don't know, sewer backup, an emergency situation where we can't have people without water. So, those are the 24/7 operation. If we were to have shift work to keep people on, you're talking at least six to seven extra people with benefits, gonna be over that $250,000 that we budget per year in overtime.
And what happened in December that made it so high? Because if you take 30 times 12, that's way over 2...
I don't, I don't know what the weeks were, but in November, for instance, you have Veterans Day, you have Election Day, you have two days in Thanksgiving, where we have to cover, we have to be on call.
Okay.
So, that would be a reason that the overtime would be more during that time period.
So overtime would be after hours, so you're saying...
Overtime would be over 40 hours per week.
Okay.
Everybody that works over 40 hours per week is entitled to overtime.
Okay, and so you're saying that $30,000 a month in overtime is just...
No, I'm saying $250,000 per year, not $30,000 per month, $250,000 per year, that's what we budget, and we're under that all the time.
Okay, all right. So we don't actually, like, go unstopp toilets or water out of basements?
We do, if there's a sewer backup to someone's basement, we have to come out and see why it's backing up. Is it the main, or is it the lateral? Since we're out there anyway, as a service to our residents, because of what they pay in taxes, we think it's a good service to, while we're out there, if it is the lateral, we will go and unclog that lateral.
Okay, so if the sewage backup...
They're not charged for that.
You're not charged for any cleanup of basements caused by an infrastructure?
That's a whole nother, that's a loaded question, and I want...
Okay, we're not, okay, so we just pay overtime. Okay, thank you. Do I have two minutes?
Sure.
I have five other things, but I'll be back. We were inspired at Nutley Homeowners Community when we passed a resolution to put together a survey that I hope all of you had had the opportunity to take. So we did our own survey. We are now 1,300 strong with over 8,000 readers, and the question was posed, what would you like, what requests would you like to make to our BOC in 2015? So can I hand you each a list, and then I'll read it?
Sure. I'll just give it to the clerk, and she'll hand them out.
Followers, wasn't quite as extensive, but I think they came up with a good list. Respectfully, in 2015, we, the citizens of the Nutley Homeowners Community, request that our Nutley Board of Commissioners have joint meetings with the Board of Education at least once a quarter, have one town hall meeting per quarter for citizen input, provide reasonably comprehensive meeting minutes for all boards.
Ms. Landry, excuse me, I hate to interrupt you, but the intensive list that you've put, five minutes have expired a couple of minutes ago. Target with the five-minute rule, provided this to us, I'm sure you'll read it, perhaps we can have a discussion offline, but I've actually kept track of the time from when the Commissioners were speaking, five minutes, and that expired.
Okay, then I'll sit down and get back up and bring it up for another...
Is there anyone else that would like to address the Board of Commissioners this
Yes. Okay.
Is there anyone else this evening that would like to address the Board of Commissioners besides Ms. Landry? Seeing no one, please.
Thank you.
I hate to harp on this, but I know that you and I have had this discussion, and I don't mean to repeat myself, but, you know, we've been having an issue with the five-minute My opinion that it doesn't continue despite the fact that no one else wants to get up. And I wanted to credit you for the time that the Commissioners were speaking, because I have a short time, and that time has expired. Now, obviously, we could be here all night, I know you have a lot of lists of things, but we have...
No, this is all, I'd just like to read the rest of this.
I'm just telling you, you know, we'd like to try to enforce it if...
Okay.
Okay with it, okay, but I just wanted you to know that, that's all.
Is this all you have?
Well, and also, I'd like to say that a couple of weeks, meetings ago, the Board did promise to start meetings at 7:30, and tonight we started at 7:45. So I would like to be allowed to read this list, and then we can call it even. Would that be okay, Mayor?
Read on.
Okay, thanks. Revised, oh, provide reasonably comprehensive meeting minutes for all boards and make them available on the Nutley website no less than 72 hours prior to the next meeting. Revise our master plan with input from new citizens and no consultants and stick to it. Provide an annual report on our master plan. Use one of our underutilized town buildings as the Nutley Youth Center. Allow citizens to pay their bills online on our Nutley website. Have on-demand broadcast of Board of Commissioners meetings on our Nutley website. Enact term limits for all appointed board members. Be transparent. Listen to feedback and act quicker on what you learn. Use social media to inform and communicate with Nutley citizens. Do the right things when no one is looking. Make other towns wish they worked with the public as well as we do. Sponsor more free public events in our parks in downtown, concerts, wine tastings, et cetera. Commit to being even more responsible with our tax dollars by further reducing municipal spending. Stop hiring unnecessary consultants, use the input of citizens more. Reduce our taxes by bringing more accountability and transparency to municipal spending. Clean up weeds and garbage in the Route 21 River Road area and maintain it. Work with the Board of Education to find a way to improve and provide playgrounds at all Nutley Public Schools. Stop rehiring township employees who have retired with pensions, and give others who are qualified a chance and opportunity for township employment. Enforce speed limits by having more cops with radar, et cetera, and raise speeding fines. Expand the visibility and reach of the Nutley Neighborhood Watch Program. Include Nutley High School students in the program. Obtain additional funding other than property taxes for better paved streets and repaired potholes. Work with Essex County and the state to provide better transportation options to NYC. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, for your thoughtful consideration of the above requests. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Landry. Is there anyone else?
I have a question. Ms. Landry? Ms. Landry? Just a clarification, I appreciate the list, it's very thoughtful. Can you just sort of, since it was a survey, you said? How many people responded to the survey?
Probably 50. It wasn't an actual survey like yours was, like Survey Month?
I know, you're just, I'm just trying to understand, you used the word survey. And of the 50 who responded, do you know how you would sort of...
Some of them were duplicates.
I appreciate that. So how many people responded to each one? Are these all individual ones?
No, no, it was one question.
Or is it some scaling that went with it to figure out how to weight these?
Oh, it was just one question? It wasn't an actual survey, sir, it was one question. What would you like to request of our BOC in 2015?
So, just I'm trying to understand, so I understand it, so I appreciate it was one question, it was not a survey, it was, but these are basically 50 folks responded at some level and gave these individual responses.
Yes.
Thank you, that's, I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else this evening that would like to address the Board of Commissioners? Seeing no one, we are gonna continue...
Move to executive session?
Second.
Whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex and the State of New Jersey desires to proceed to close executive session, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley that the Township Commission shall now move into closed executive session to discuss potential litigation. Be it further resolved, that the time when such discussion may be disclosed to the public shall be when and as such disclosure may be made without adversely affecting the Township of Nutley pending and/or anticipated legal personnel contractual matters and other matters within the exceptions provided for by statute. Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye, thank you for coming.
And the time is now 8:47.
The reason is for legal advice and contractual negotiation.